Arboges.
President.
Jay Brady.
Yes.
G Broder.
Here.
Dee Homender. Escaltrao.
Here.
Jay Ryan.
Present.
Cave Van Bergen Budo.
Here.
Please go into the classroom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion for approval of the minutes for 4:30, 18.
So moved.
Second.
For Jim, he's executive. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, on the first one public, it shows that there was a move by Jay Brady that... I'm not sure if we made a motion for that motion, but...
On you.
I didn't do it.
So on the first non-public, can you say what page that's on?
It's on page four.
Page four of the minutes.
It was the first page of the minutes, page four.
Oh. So the first motion to not to non-public, this one. Yeah. And does anybody remember who it is?
I'll double check.
Okay.
Roxanne, get it.
Double check my notes.
Anything else? Any other just amendments to the minutes? Ready to vote? All those in favor? Vote abstain. So that's four for yes and one abstained for no. The manifesto very well to... Any public input? Okay, I have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. Action Agenda Item Number Five is going to be to accept the resignation of Jean Jacobs, Whitefield Elementary School, effective June 30th, 2018. And Action Agenda Item Number Six is going to be to approve the following administrative nomination mark, with a K if anyone's wondering, Primmittow for Assistant Principal, Link Asta Elementary School. You should all have in front of you the nomination sheet. Do you want to put that in there?
Yes.
On the, at a recommended starting salary of $65,000.
And this is for the 17, 18.
For the 17, wait, 18, 19 school year. Jim, Roxanne. Do we have student record? Superintendent's report. Do you want to give rates?
We could start with Martina.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Good evening. How are you doing?
Good.
Is it still microwave?
It's, yes, because in Dominican culture, they actually, the women don't take husbands' last names. So it works perfectly because I wasn't gonna do it anyways. So yeah. We're both on the board. So thank you for asking. So as you already mentioned, my name is Martina Matzaco. I'm a Spanish teacher at White Mountain Regional High School. Many of you know me, some of you don't know me. I'm here tonight to present a trip, community service trip, to Dominican Republic. It's our fourth time with our school doing the same trip. We last year added also extended learning opportunity to the trip and it had really good, really good feedback, I guess, from our, from our student body. So we're working, Mr. Curtis and I, we're working on adding the external learning opportunity again, but we're trying to obviously explore different, different options. We're leaning toward architecture and art this time. So Mr. Curtis thought that it would be probably a good idea because the students will be able to get the art credit through the external learning opportunity as well. So this is a community service trip that we organize and we work with the Batte Foundation. The Batte Foundation is an organization that is really from Bethlehem. So it's a local organization, nonprofit organization. They work with a sister, sister organization, the Friends Around the World, which is from Dominican Republic. And as I said, I believe they exist for, I believe this is their 12th or 13th year. Many local schools profile goes every year. Lisbon School went, Lisbon High School went, Littleton High School went, New Hampshire, I mean, UNH goes every year, Plymouth State, yeah. So it's like fairly, you know, the program is already set and it's in place and it's a, it's a steady program. Students do seem to get a lot out of it. You know, from the cultural point of view, from the community service point of view, giving back, a global citizenship, Spanish as well. So there's, I, in my opinion, there is not really any, you know, negative part of the, of the trip. But as I said, this is the first time that I'm presenting this trip. So I also have two students who had the opportunity to experience this trip from firsthand last year, or actually this school year, and are very interested, both are juniors, are very interested in going again. So I don't know, you can ask me anything or you can ask anything to them. We have Izzy and Ashley, and as I said, both are very interested to go.
I just had a comment. I noticed last year was the first time with, well, we haven't been doing capstone projects for very long, but you had the service trip that you had last year. There were some students in culinary that referenced the trip from last year and it was really nice to see.
That's true. Yes, it is. It really is. It's a really nice trip.
So you did a capstone project on the service trip.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. It's not limited only to students. It's encouraged for students who are taking Spanish, but it's not limited to those students. And from last year, you could probably, the only difference is really the price increased about $300. And the reason to that is, it's really same price, but last year I was able to, one of my friends donated $2,500 to the trip. So that was, you know, that donation brought, brought it a little bit down. But this year we are offering, we're, we're hoping to go November 8th through 15th, which means that instead of two school days, we would miss three school days. But also we're hoping to get cheaper tickets, so probably the price will go a little bit down too. So that's the only difference. Everything else is the same, staying in the same area, working in the same area. We already have connections. So, you know, students are excited to go back and to actually, so.
It seems like the price is a lot less than it had been in previous years. Is that due?
Well, because the community service...
They go to different locations, lots of baby companies.
So it's, number one, it's because, well, in my opinion, they're not really making money. You know, it's a nonprofit.
Right.
And we also have to remember that, yes, it might seem a lot, $2,000, but we, not only that, you know, it covers our expenses and everything, but it also covers all materials and the help that they have, you know, there, so.
That's my concern. Okay, is that, one, it is a substantial price pursuit. And I've sent three girls here, one girl twice. Okay, and my concern about it was, it was never mentioned once that the $200 to $300, $300, $400 that we pay in those different times per child, per time, was buying the materials that they were working with.
They do include it in the informational packet because that's per the Batte Foundation.
I found it on their website last year.
Yeah. But, yes, it's, I mean, it's a, you know, it's like a donating also, not only your time, but also the money.
Again, you know, up here, that's a lot of money.
Absolutely.
Okay, and if I knew that, I could at least put it on my taxes.
So Tyler Welch tried to do that and he couldn't.
Is it a nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit, but it's a certain, like, specific, because they actually, their accountant actually looked into it because he wanted, one of the people who, Tyler Welch was, was with me two years ago. He actually raised money. Because when it's a community service, it's really easier for students to, you know, raise money through, you know, letters and everything. He did not pay one cent for that trip. He raised all the money by donations and everything. And there were two or three people from the businesses that he actually got the money, that they were actually asking for the same, same... Yes, so they actually forwarded, we forwarded, we dealt with this for like two, three months, to be honest with you. And they forwarded to their accountant and the decision was, they were not able to get it... Any tax credit.
In my opinion, and again, I'm just one of several people that are sitting here tonight, but I think that we should pursue other options that don't cost our students $2,000 to $3,000 to do these things.
I agree.
It's a great cause.
And I brought up...
It's a wonderful cause, but...
And then I brought up the class, I did, because my daughter went in her 12-year year, but not to Dominican.
Right, to your...
Barcelona, Madrid.
Right.
And it was over $5,000.
Right.
So when I made a comment of it, which she fundraised herself as well to, you know...
Absolutely.
And that was obviously a substantial amount, but my comment was like, we're getting less.
And we do, and I mean, we did stay in hotels in Europe. We didn't stay, I mean, the girls can tell you where we, where we stayed. And we also, you know, the, I mean, the flights. The flights, back then especially because Europe was so strong, fuel and everything. I was, I mean, the difference was about $1,200, just the, just the plane ticket.
I remember, and from, from when they had already booked a trip too, to, to actually going.
Yeah.
It went up like $700 because of the fuel costs.
Yeah. To be honest with you, I actually, in the past, explored option of just taking students on my own and doing something like this. But the whole responsibility of me as a person, if something happens, then nothing ever happened. But it just, it literally, every time I think about it and I start exploring, because I've done it many times, I really said, I should just do this on my own. But then every time the feedback comes, all the liability is on you, it's on you, it's on you. And as much as I love my students, I am just, can I really put my hand on, you know, I mean, they... So that's why I always go back and be like, let's just use a company. And every time you use a company, that's the truth, so.
To try to find alternatives now is too late. We've done this with this company in the past.
Yes.
It's been very successful.
Yes.
And when you look at the price, I think that's really up to the student and the parent, quite frankly. They have the opportunity to raise money as Tyler did.
Yes.
As my daughter did when she did something similar to this when she was in college. And so I think that falls under the child, that they can't make it, they can't make it. But I'm saying, I'm strongly, or as I continue.
Can we hear from your kids?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
For me personally, I worked two jobs this past summer to raise money and I paid for most of the trip on my own. And it was worth like every cent and every hour that I worked. Just be able to do something like that. Like I've always wanted to go on a service trip and help people and that's always just been a dream of mine and to be able to, like, work so hard and then go and be able to do that was just so fulfilling. And I would work three jobs or however, like, however many jobs I had to, to make enough money to go again.
Yeah, and it's really rewarding, like, you can't get what we're learning and what we're getting out of the Dominican in a classroom setting. And it's just amazing to see like what we're, like, experiencing over there, like, the different people we're meeting and, like, experiencing, the culture. And like, we're so lucky to be able to go on that trip and like to see how the other people live. Like, it's just a really humbling and amazing experience that we are both interested in going again.
Yeah, and we, like, we were able to connect with some of the people who involve themselves with the Batte Foundation in the Dominican Republic. So I personally wouldn't want to explore another option because I want to go back and I want to see...
Work with the same people.
Yeah, I want to work, I mean, obviously I want to meet new people in the Dominican, but I want to see, like, Roberto, who was like a 15-year-old who worked with us for most of the time. And I want to see, like, Leary and everybody, so. Yeah, Debbie. I, I just like, I don't know, I love it. And it, it's really eye-opening, I think, for students who might be, like, considering doing something like that or thinking, oh, like, I probably couldn't, it's too hard, or I couldn't handle it. Like, for me, I've thought about, like, the Peace Corps and things like that. And, but it's always been a thing of, oh, that would be so, it would take such a toll on me and it would be so difficult to be in an environment like that. And I know the Dominican isn't like the worst place you could be, but it definitely was a different environment. And it just made me realize I can do something like this and I can help people. And I want to do that again so much.
Yeah, and it's definitely rewarding or whatever. I always think that.
Is there like a specific project, are you building a big fair or a...
It's like, it's like different every time. So like, last time we were building, when we were there in November, we were helping build the preschool. But the times before, like, they made, like, a community center and then like we visited that place.
So it'll be interesting if you do get to go back. It's just progress and how it's developed.
Yeah, because I think they did finish the preschool building, or they like...
Yeah, because profiling that we were working on. Yeah, profile just went in April, so they...
Yeah, and it's really like, it's interesting because it's such a joint effort with all the groups they take, so.
They'll start where the other group left off.
Yeah, it's like, it's like, it's a, it's a group effort among the group you go with and also a group effort among all of the groups, so. Yeah, it's awesome.
As a parent, I just think it's invaluable to have kids learn to give back and to be able to make money and then give back to something that's bigger than themselves. So I strongly support this trend.
Yeah. Thanks.
My granddaughter Sarah went.
Yes, she did.
She's finishing UNH next year. And that's what she wants to do, go back and help people.
I would like.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It really is student initiated that we are organizing this trip. It's not me going, because honestly, I could go to Dominican and just see my husband's family and I can't do that when I'm there. So working. Exactly, and good being with students, so thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions on my report? It's got a lot of dates in it of the end of the year activities that you might want to note and come be involved in. As you can see, we, the teachers have to make up three days. This is the makeup days for snow. We have one day filled with youth mental health for state and/or trauma-informed practices, depending on what grade you teach. That's part of the S O C grant. Then we have building based, based in building-based flex days. I wanted to thank Ms. Chi Hien. She submitted some grants for the reallocation title money. This Title I and Title II money that was left over from the feds and they gave the state a chunk of money and it was very competitive grants. Many districts didn't get any money and she was awarded $115,000 for three different P T activities that, that's pretty significant. We're really happy about that. So anything else, unless you have questions?
I do, just a couple of comments.
Yeah.
On the list of events, I don't know why the J R O T C event on 5/19 wasn't listed. That goes from 1 o'clock to 2 o'clock.
Yeah, I know that is there. And I must have, I had people fill in a Google Doc of stuff and that's got overlooked, but you're right. This Saturday at 1 o'clock. Well, 12 o'clock is the reception.
That's correct.
And then 1 o'clock is the J R O T C.
I didn't know whether it was just by invitation or what.
No, it is not.
Because we had the R S V P.
We had R S V P, but I think if you want to go, just, just send...
Nope. I already, I can't go, but I already told the Colonel.
Okay. He would love all board members to go, I'm sure.
And then the F F A event on, on May 30th.
Is this not on here?
It's not on here. It starts at 6 o'clock.
Did they send out their invitations already?
Yep. I got it last week's mail.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. And programming, Scott, you have any...
We just met tonight.
Take the minutes for next time.
Yes.
Facilities.
I have a meeting scheduled Wednesday.
Personnel, we have nothing right now. Policy, our next meeting will be prior to the board meeting on May 29th at 1 o'clock. Safety, anything?
We had our meeting and haven't seen minutes yet.
Okay.
There should be any more without.
Do you follow what they missed?
Yes, the fourth meeting.
Strategy planning, that should be coming up soon. I have it scheduled.
Carrie will send those minutes from our meeting tonight to you for next packet, correct?
Has the Athletic Advisory Council met?
Some subcommittees are meeting. I was in touch with Carrie last week by email and they're working on the handbook right now, policies. And I think they're close. Once that's done, then we'll be all coming back together again and setting up the time for a public hearing where we can put this up out. Some finding suggestions, changes out for public review.
And Jim, have you met Laura C D? Do you have anything on the book, say, or from...
The last meeting was canceled.
Right. All right, maybe we need to get in touch with Mr. Scott. Okay. Okay, unfinished business in your packet. You did receive a letter, somewhat accepting the Jefferson School property.
About the town. Their attorney asked them to have a town meeting before they accept. So the town meeting, I believe, is, I think it's June 5th.
They already have it scheduled, because the way that the letter reads, for anybody that... No, it's, at, at the very end, it says, does the district have a timeline of when to complete the tax action? Because, well, there's some provision or information that they're looking for, so. And they're going to have a special time.
I've already spoken.
But they've already scheduled this special time.
Yes. They have to, they have to plan it ahead.
Right, so basically they're asking us to get...
It's the beginning of June, it's either the 3rd or the 5th. I'd have to look at the calendar and see.
So through facilities, when we need this week, we're going to have to try and get this information.
Well, Bill has been putting together stuff. I already asked him. I have a more in-depth list than this. But I figured they would need, you know, just to know.
Definitely.
So he's, he's starting to put the stuff together. And I believe that sets this, we even got someone who requests.
Someone?
There was some, I had an email sent to me, someone was requesting. Actually, it was Lynn Howman who's requesting more information. So I'll get it to Bill and...
So provided they have, early June, they have their special meeting and make the assumption that it passes and that they want to... When do we as a board anticipate?
Well, I think after that, it's just me and the matter of the attorneys.
Stop scheduling of the hours.
Yeah. I don't see why they need another meeting. At the town meeting, the town voted to...
Accept it.
Accept the Warren article, so.
It may have been written in a way that...
To me, it's redundant, but...
Yeah.
The attorneys, you know, they like to make money.
So maybe safe to say that this summer sometime we'll be transferring the...
Oh, I'm sure. If it's accepted, I'm sure.
I just want to raise your end of line. Or respond.
I don't even know if this is...
Okay. New business? Any current action items? Okay, could I have a motion? Action Agenda Item 1, a motion to approve the following teacher nominations for school here, 18, 19. Margaret Laya, Humanities Teacher, White Mountain Regional High School, salary $38,300. Step 1 M A, Emily McGrady, MS, Middle School Math Teacher, Whitefield Elementary School, salary $34,500, Step 0 E A.
So moved.
Second.
Jim and Randy, is he here? Second.
Do you have a question on, on Margaret's certified personal recommendation? Is there a reason like use start dates of 2017?
Excuse me?
Use the start date of September 2017.
No mistake, I was always August, August 20, August 27th, 2018.
2018?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. So as amended to 2018 on Margaret's, you may very well...
Does that also then mean that the date at the bottom of that page in the document...
Yeah, it says May, May 27th.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, 2017. I was trying to be clear.
Yes. Oh, 17 should be 18, how about that?
At least.
Okay, I'll be ready to vote. As amended.
We're going to say it's Roxanne's vote again?
Yeah, Roxanne did it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Action Agenda Item 2, could I have a motion to approve the following job descriptions, paraprofessional and specialized paraprofessional?
Second.
Stephen and Jim? Presenting. Any questions, comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor?
Hey.
Sorry?
I'd like to back up just a little bit.
Okay.
I asked a question at the curriculum meeting of Merit above Herb Connery being replaced with a math teacher.
And that's not, that person is not replacing Herb. It's just a budget switch.
Okay. And this slide, the board should know that.
Should know that.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That's my position.
Yeah. It sounds, she will budget it.
Sounds funny.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
Ready to vote? All those in favor? Opposed? Not unanimous? Action Agenda Item 3, could I have a motion to approve an out-of-the-country field trip to the Dominican Republic for November 8th to 15th, 2018, Thursday to Thursday, leaving after school and three school days missed.
So moved.
Second. Do you have votes of move, votes of no? Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? We have one in favor and one no vote.
Oh.
Really no vote.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Don't sit down the window.
Because he doesn't want to say no, but he doesn't want to say yes, so.
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you.
Make your other al, alternatives, and I think this is the really expensive one, and human psychology, one of them. These kids are gonna try to get their kids into it, and their other kids are gonna want their parents to fund it, and they're not gonna really afford it, so we gotta find different options. I think these programs are for ten kids.
Okay, thank you.
Action agenda item four, could I have a motion to approve the following volunteer coach, Bob Gall, J V softball, White Mountain Regional High School?
So.
All right. Do you want to, do you have a second? Any questions, comments, ready to vote? All in favor? Thank you, all in here. Action agenda item five. To accept the resignation of Jeanie Jacobs, sorry, Jeanie Jacobs. No, right, Jeanie. White, Whitefield Elementary School, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. There a motion?
So.
Second?
Reluctantly.
Yes, a reluctant second from George, and with appreciation.
Yep.
Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Two units reluctantly and with appreciation. Action agenda item number six, could I have a motion to approve the following administrative nomination? Mark Primminal, Assistant Principal Lancaster Elementary School, at a starting salary of sixty-five thousand for the seventeen, eighteen, sorry, eighteen, nineteen school year.
So move. Second.
Move, George, second it. Any questions, comments?
It has, I, I know Mark has been working on his, on his accreditation. Has he completed that?
He's, he's, but he's, we're in.
Very close. He's the guy.
We gotta cover.
Any other questions, comments, ready to vote?
And I trust that appropriate. The steps that we laid out were.
You trusted correctly.
Sure I?
Followed it to a T. It was a great process. It was a wonderful process.
Good. Excellent.
Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? That is unanimous. Republican, uh, no, please. You need an op-. This meeting is adjourned. Seven oh three.